Flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Clerk, please call the roll.
Madam Mayor, we have three council members absent. Zachary Urban, George Pond, and Genevieve Woodin are in Washington DC at National League of Cities. So, the roll call is as follows. Monica Duran.
Here.
Janice Hoppy.
Present.
Kristy Davis. Tim Fitzgerald.
Here.
Larry Matthews.
Present.
And Madam Mayor, we have a quorum.
Thank you. The council minutes of February 27 and special study notes of February 27. Are there any changes to those minutes? None? Then they do stand approved as presented. I have one proclamation tonight, which I'm going to read. This is in a proclamation for International Week of Service to designate the week of March 25 through March 31, 2017. Whereas community service and volunteering is a hallmark of the citizens of the state of Colorado, and whereas service organizations are vital to the needs of the communities in which they serve, and whereas service organizations throughout the state of Colorado are joined together for the last full week of March 2017 to emphasize the importance of community service and demonstrate the impact of serving others, and whereas service organizations, including the Coannis Club of Wheat Ridge, Wheat Ridge Optimist Club, and Wheat Ridge Rotary Club of Colorado, who serve the city of Wheat Ridge, will join the statewide celebration of International Services Week 2017. Now, therefore, I, Joyce J., Mayor, and the City Council of the City of Wheat Ridge, Colorado, in recognition of this event, do hereby proclaim March 25 through 31, 2017, as International Week of Service in Colorado, and encourage Wheat Ridge community members to support this week through volunteerism. And I do want to thank our service clubs. We have a very active group of service clubs in the city of Wheat Ridge. We've done a lot of great things for our city, a lot of carrying on special projects. We have citizens' right to speak. I see the attorney is perhaps getting a paper for us. Okay. Let's start with Fred Walker. Fred, would you please give your address and spell your last name?
As I speak into the microphone, say your name and your address and spell your last name.
Okay. Fred Walker, 3665 Everett in Wheat Ridge, and my last name is W.A.L.K.E.R. And I'm here to talk about Canadian geese. I've noticed that the city of Denver has had some programs about how to either eliminate or get rid of the geese some way or other. It seems to me the first step is that I believe the state protects the geese so that they're sort of, nobody can shoot them, which is what should be done. So, I think that the cities and the state government should first of all eliminate that or take the geese off that protected list. And so then, my suggestions would be to talk to the NRA or some organization like that, and give them the okay to shoot them, and then have them delivered to a meat processor, and that's where the city would come in, as far as I'm concerned, and pay for the processing of the meat, and then give it to the poor or anybody else who wants it. The main thing is that finally the geese would provide something good, rather than just all the dirt they leave all over the place. So, that's my hope that we can reduce the geese population.
Thank you, Fred. Mr. Tullio.
Thank you, Jerry DeTullio, City of Wheat Ridge. I'm here as a teacher tonight. I just wanted to ask for volunteers. Every year, the Wheat Ridge High School has the capstone presentations by the seniors. That's a year-long process of where the seniors actually develop a research paper and a slideshow about their future career plans post-secondary. And we have judges come in from the public who volunteer to help judge the presentations. So, we always need a lot of judges because we're talking about the entire senior class will be presenting the night of the 24th. So, if you're interested in being a judge at Wheat Ridge High School, it's April 24th. And the dinner, which is a free dinner for the volunteers, starts at 5:00 at the cafeteria. And then, starting at 6:00 is the capstone judging for about an hour and a half, two hours. If you're interested in being a judge and working with the high school students, you can call Terry at Wheat Ridge High School at 303-982-7695. She's the principal secretary, and she can take your name and email address. Or you can contact me, and I can get you on the list too. But I've posted it on Facebook, and I've posted it on some email lists. So, if you're interested in helping out, it's really cool because you'll see some professional presentations by seniors who've taken a year-long work on their project. So, a lot of them come in with career-ready information. They have a lot of props. They have their uniforms, if they're going to be a firefighter, or a nurse, or a doctor, or whatever. They have a lot of different information for the public, and they're judged, and then you have a little judge for them. So, dinner at 5:00, capstone at 6:00. And that number again at Wheat Ridge is 303-982-7695. Just ask for Terry Schreiner. Thanks.
Thank you. Actually, I've done that, and it's a lot of fun. It really is a nice experience. I'd suggest our counselors think about it. Any changes in tonight's agenda? There are none? We can go forward. Mr. Matthews, would you read the consent agenda?
Okay. The consent agenda tonight consisting of items A through G. Number A, motion to award a contract to Sabel's Enterprises, Littleton, Colorado, in the amount of $152,569 for a new irrigation system at Panorama Park, and to approve a contingency amount of $7,628 for a total of $160,197. Item B, a motion to approve payment to creative bus sales of Colorado Springs, Colorado, for the purchase of a new 2017 Smart Trans Senator II 15-passenger minibus in a total amount not to exceed $51,518. Item C, a motion to award a contract to Playco Park Builders, Inc., Loveland, Colorado, in the amount of $72,237 for the purpose of installing playground fall surfacing at Discovery Park, and to approve a contingency of $3,611.50 for a total amount of $75,848.50. Item D, a resolution, number 06-2017, amending the fiscal year 2016 capital investment program budget to reflect the approval of a decreased appropriation in the amount of $2,813,633. Item E, a resolution, number 07, 2017, amending the fiscal year 2016 conservation trust fund budget to reflect the approval of a decreased appropriation in the amount of $69,157. Item F, a resolution, number 8, 2017, amending the fiscal year 2016 open space budget to reflect the approval of a decreased appropriation in the amount of $788,963. And item G, resolution 9-2017, amending the fiscal year 2016 budget to reflect the approval of increased available beginning fund balances in certain funds.
Thank you. A motion is in order.
I move that we accept the consent agenda, items A through G, as read.
Second? Segmented by Ms. Duran. Please cast your votes.
Motion carries five to zero.
Item number two, Mr. Fitzgerald.
Item number two is a public hearing and an ordinance for second reading. Council Bill 02-2017, an ordinance authorizing the issuance by the City of Wheat Ridge, Colorado, of its sales and use tax revenue bonds, Series 2017A, and providing other details in connection therewith. The issue is, at the regular council general election held November 8, 2016, the electorate of the city approved ballot question 2E, which increases the sales and use tax levied by the city by one-half of 1 percent, and authorizes the issuance of debt to finance city investment in public infrastructure to facilitate economic development opportunities. Sales and use tax revenue bonds will be issued to finance the city investments, which requires approval of an ordinance by City Council.
Thank you. We do need an ordinance number on this?
This will be ordinance number 1615.
I'm going to open the public hearing. And I would make a, we don't have, we wouldn't be swearing anyway, staff report?
Mayor Jay, we have Jason Simmons from First Southwest, and then Sally Tasker from Butler Snow, who are here this evening to give a short presentation update on where we're at.
Thank you. Would you give your names again, please?
Sure. My name's Sally Tasker. I'm with Butler Snow, your bond counsel.
Okay.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. I will be brief, because I'm also watching The Bachelor. But I also know who won.
I'm trying to bring dignity here.
I looked within 10 minutes of the first show, so don't ask me who won, because I know. Anyway, this ordinance that is before you tonight is the bond ordinance that would approve the sales tax bonds that you were talking about that were authorized at the election on November 8. And it also approved at the same time the increase in a sales tax of one cent to pay the debt service on those bonds. The election question had certain parameters in it, that the bonds could not be issued for more than $33 million. It would be payable from half-cent sales tax increase. The total repayment cost would be $38.5 million. The sales tax increase would sunset when the $38.5 million was received, or the earlier 12/31/2028. So, it is a limited duration and amount of the sales tax. There were four projects that were approved at the election, as you know. Anderson Park, Wadsworth Boulevard reconstruction from 35th Avenue to I-70, commuter rail station for the Gold Line, and on-and-off hook ramps for I-70 for the Clear Creek Crossing. So, those were the specific projects. So, if you do approve the ordinance tonight, you will be approving the issuance of these bonds. You will also be approving the execution and delivery of documents that are related to the bonds. So, those would include a bond purchase agreement with your underwriter, George K. Baum. And Alan Matlos is here tonight. It would include a paying agent agreement with your paying agent, who would be the one that you would pay the money to the paying agent, and then they would make the payments to the bondholders. That's Colorado State Bank. It also approves the offering document. We would, these are, bonds are being offered to the public with a preliminary official statement, and then a final official statement. And it would also approve continuing disclosure undertaking that would be required by the underwriter to enter into with the city before they could market your bonds. So, a couple of things about the flow of funds in the ordinance that I know we've talked about before, just wanted to remind you. The half-cent that was authorized at the election will be used only for these projects and to pay these bonds. So, when the money comes in, it will be set up in a special fund that you have already set up. The city is also pledging an additional half-cent of your general sales tax. So, there's a total pledge of one cent. And we're breaking it up in the ordinance, so the half-cent authorized via the election comes in first. Use that first. If you do need additional revenue in a particular month, you would use the backup other half-cent that would be available for other projects. In each month, if you don't need the extra half-cent, it becomes available then for the rest of city projects. But the, and I know there's lots of half-cents here, but the one that was authorized at the election, we will, we are tying it down because it is limited in duration and amount, so that it can only be used for these bonds or these projects. This is a parameters ordinance, which means that you are authorizing either the city treasurer or your city manager to do the final pricing on the bonds. And I know Jason Simmons, who is with First Southwest, your financial municipal advisor, will tell you a little bit about the timing. But after we market the bonds, or after George K. Baum markets the bonds, there will be the final interest rate, maturity, and amortization will be set. This ordinance allows your city treasurer or your city manager to sign that sales certificate, also to sign the bond purchase agreement on the day of pricing. And there are parameters that are set forth in the ordinance, and as long as we stay within those parameters, we do not need further approval. We don't have to come back again on the day of pricing. This has been the tradition now for many years. It used to be that we had to tie the market to the council meetings. Sometimes that wasn't the most advantageous way to price the bonds. So, there's a provision in statute that was adopted by the Colorado Legislature that allows you to delegate this pricing. So, your parameters are basically the same as was in your election question. So, we can issue up to $33 million for a total repayment of $38.5 million, maximum annual amount, not more than $3.7 million. Maturity date not longer than December 1, 2028. The purchase price will be at least 100 percent of the bonds. I think they probably will be sold at a premium, given the market. And the net effective interest rate, you're not going to have an interest rate more than 3.5 percent, and they will be tax exempt. So, I think that's really what I wanted to talk to you about as far as this ordinance. If you do approve it tonight, we will have a 45-day referendum period, and after that is over, we will issue the bonds. So, with that, unless you have questions, I'll let Jason give you a little more about the timing.
Do we have questions of Sally at this point? Sounds like it. Jason, would you want to come forward?
Thank you.
Good evening. Jason Simmons, First Southwest, the city's municipal advisor for the Series 2017 bonds. Just quick update on where we are. Last week, we did have discussions with the rating agencies as standard and cores to present the transaction, give a lot of background on the city, what's going on in the city, and then overview of the election, the projects, and then the final structure of the bonds as we're anticipating it. We anticipate getting ratings from S&amp;P on Wednesday of this week. At that point in time, we will finalize the offering document, as Sally said, and get that out so it can be distributed publicly. And so, George K. Baum, the serving's underwriter, can start marketing these bonds. We are targeting setting the interest rates or selling or marketing the bonds next week. That's the date that the interest rates will be set. Right now, we're looking at rates in the 280 to 290 range, so well below your maximum authorization of 3.5 percent. And we're targeting the $33 million of project proceeds for you with this offering. The bonds with your 45-day referendum period will close the first week of May, and that's when the funds will actually be available for use. But again, the interest rates will be set and locked in as of next week when we sell and price the bonds.
Any questions? If I may ask, will it be difficult to sell bonds at that rate? Or kind of average?
No. I mean, you know, there are a lot of factors, and Alan, feel free to jump in here if there's anything you'd like to add. You know, the market for municipal bonds is driven by a variety of factors. One, the overall economic environment, overall supply and demand of municipal bonds on a national level, and then overall supply and demand of bonds within Colorado. The last couple of weeks have been pretty light in Colorado, new issue sales. So, we think that there should be some strong demand for these bonds. This is a relatively unique transaction in that it is so short. You know, many transactions that we sell have 20- to 30-year amortization periods, where this is going to be marketed from 11-year.
That makes it, yeah, particularly.
So, it's gonna, it has some unique characteristics to it. So, we do not expect it to be challenging to sell the bonds next week, barring any kind of unforeseen event. But we think it'll be very successful next week.
And I take it a good rating would be helpful.
Yeah. And as I, we talked about the last, when I was here, I think about a month ago, we talked about the different rating levels and the pledge, and that's when we ended up on the one-cent pledge. We're looking at a rating in the high A category, low double A category. And then, we're also talking to the insurance companies we've talked about, we might use municipal bond insurance on this. Again, that's something that's authorized in the parameters resolution. So, that's some work that we'll do over the next couple of days to determine what's in the best economic benefit for the city for this financing. So, once we get the rating, we'll make a determination on the use of insurance and factor that in before we post the offering document later this week.
Okay. Any other questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I don't, oh, Mr. Tullio.
Just wanted to mention the city council. Once the bonds are sold, there'll be, $33 million will be wired to the city of Wheat Ridge. In working with a company, that's a municipal investment company called C-Safe or Colorado Safe, we're looking at depositing those funds in C-Safe for the time being, and that'll be earning a higher interest rate than normal, like a CD or a money market. And so, right now, the interest is an eighth of, or 0.8 of a percent, and it could go up to 1.55 percent. And legally, we can't earn more money than we're paying on the interest rate, but this investment will actually get us a pretty good return on the money, and it'll be earning interest as we're waiting for the projects to come to fruition. So, we'll be able to earn quite a bit of money, I think. Because right now, the highest rate we've had on a money market was 0.35 of a percent, and this will be 0.8 of a percent, and then going up to possibly 1.55 percent in interest rate. And that money will be available also for projects and everything else that we have, independent of the four, I believe, right, Mr. Doe? That, the interest, yeah, the interest earned is we can go to the general fund.
Go to our, the interest earned could go to our general fund?
Right.
Okay.
It's not tied to the project. And then, the other thing would be is that that money would, so what we might do is working with the city manager, we may put all of the $33 million into C-Safe, or we'll keep out a year's worth of expenses, and then just put the rest into C-Safe. So, say, for example, we were going to spend $1 million this year. I don't know if we are or not, but if it was going to be $1 million in expenses this year, we would just put $32 million in C-Safe and leave the rest in our general fund or our checking accounts, so we could pay those bills, so.
Which will offset the cost of the interest we're paying on the bonds. It'll help a little bit.
Right.
I believe that's, I can, Larry had a, I'm sorry, I'm glad you signed.
Thank you. That was a question I had, and you answered it, but then you came up about putting the funds from the interest into the general fund. Would those be into a, I'm going to say escrow, for lack of a better word? Were they still reserved for this work in case of cost overruns? Or would they just, how would that interest transfer work? And would they be in a reserve fund for the projects?
Well, that would be your call as council to decide. As the money is deposited in C-Safe, it's earning interest, that'll be just on top of the $33 million balance. And then, the city manager and the city council can decide what that interest money is, because it'll be tracked monthly. You can decide how you want to use that, those funds. You can transfer it to the general fund. You can keep it in there and earn more interest on it.
So, it can't stay inside the fund?
Yes.
It doesn't have to be?
Right. That money is not tied to the four projects, per se. It could be for general operating expenses, or however you want to use it.
Thank you.
Right.
Mr. Fitzgerald.
I move to approve Council Bill 02-2017.
I need to close the public hearing.
Oh.
There's no other questions? I'm going to close the public hearing.
Okay. Let me try that again. I move to approve Council Bill 02-2017, an ordinance authorizing the issuance by the city of Wheat Ridge, Colorado, of its sales and use tax revenue bonds, Series 2017A, and providing other details in connection therewith on second reading, and that it take effect immediately upon adoption.
Second. Oops. Second, Ms. Davis, I think got it out first. I, please, if there's no further discussion, looks like it, please cast your votes.
Motion carries five to zero.
Oh. I have so many jobs up here, I have to pass the jelly beans. We are really a serious council tonight. Ms. Davis, would you read item number three?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Council Bill number 03-2017, an ordinance approving the rezoning of property located at 4255 Yarrow Street from residential 2 to mixed-use neighborhood, MUN, case number WZ1608, in Viro Finance Group. Issue, the applicant is requesting approval of zone change from residential 2 to mixed-use neighborhood for the property located at 4255. Just some background on this is it's the property that is, it's the greenhouses. So, the property contains non-conforming greenhouses that was constructed in the 1940s with minor modifications. Subsequently, the building is currently vacant. This group is actually a group that works on several environmental cleanup type of projects within the state. And they have, with regard to traffic impacts based on trip generation information reviewed, during the referral process, it was determined that the local streets are adequate to support rezoning requests. Additional traffic analysis will be required during administrative site plan review process, including further consideration of whether a traffic signal is warranted at 44th and Yarrow. That's it.
That's it?
I could go into more, but I'll wait.
This is first reading, so we'll go to a motion pretty quickly?
So, can I, I just, a quick question, because I thought Meredith would be here. I actually watched this on the planning commission, this hearing. And I don't know if this is a question I wait and ask then, but I don't want to, I don't want to side-swipe somebody too. But I, why are we not doing R3?
It's a good question. R3, the city is, has a kind of a unique framework in that we have a number of residential zone districts, but some of those cannot be applied for anymore. So, they still apply, the rules still apply, because there's a number of properties out there that are zoned something like R3 or R2, but you could not rezone that property. You'd have to, you have two options in terms of rezoning this property to something that would allow residential uses. You could go to a planned residential district, which would be an option, or you could go to a mixed-use district, which is the option that they're choosing. They went with the mixed-use neighborhood district because that aligns with the charter restrictions in regards to residential density and maximum building heights that are in the charter. So, the MUN complies with that, and this property is subject to those limitations. So, R3 was not an option for them to ask at this point. It's a zoning district that's still on the books, but not one that's available for properties to rezone to. So, the MUN, from a density standpoint, is very similar to what the R3 would be, but that's the answer.
Yeah. So, I did watch the planning district meeting, so thank you. That's a good answer, because in the planning meeting, they talked about, her comment was, well, this one, that would take longer. Or she said something to that effect. I think with the mixed-use neighborhood, I think the issue was, and this was even presented in the planning committee, is that there is no plans to have any mixed use. It's all going to be residential, and which I agree with completely with where this is sitting. I think to have any kind of commercial is not appropriate, because I don't think they'd get the traffic that they need. So, it's not really meeting the mixed-use neighborhood format. And then, the other thing is...
Madam Mayor, could I interrupt?
Yeah.
This is rezoning, it's quasi-dishal.
All right.
I get it that you have questions of information.
Okay.
Which are appropriate in a context like this. But to start judging the application and start making statements about, conclusions about whether the application should be approved or not, really need to wait until you've had the second reading public hearing and heard the testimony. You may feel the same in two weeks, but I'd ask you to hold sort of your conclusions on the application, and whether it's the right thing or the wrong thing, until the actual public hearing.
Well, I guess, let me ask you my conclusion, because I guess, I, not making a conclusion of if the applicant, I'm just making, asking about the rezoning. Because if the rezoning is mixed-use neighborhood, and there's not going to be mixed use there, is that not an appropriate question?
It's an appropriate question to ask what, you know, what zone districts are available.
Okay.
But I would stop with that and
All right.
Not go on to say, well, I agree with that. I think that's the right district.
Right.
Because really, that's exactly what they're asking. They're asking to rezone to something, and they're going to ask you to make a decision about whether that's the right thing.
Okay.
So, you're moving into that verbal? So you're moving into that verbal, moving into that.
Yeah, that decision-making process is what should wait. I'm perfectly fine with asking the question of information. I'm no problem with that.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, that was helpful. So being as we are, this is first reading, we can move right on into, and then those questions can be asked and opinions made. So if you would therefore give us a motion.
All right. I move to approve Council Bill number oh-three twenty seventeen, an ordinance approving the rezoning of property located at forty-two fifty-five Yarrow Street from residential two to mixed-use neighborhood. On first reading, order it published, public hearing set for Monday, April tenth, twenty-seventeenth at seven P.M. in city council chambers, and that it take effect fifteen days after final publication.
Second.
Segmented by Mr. Fitzgerald. Please cast your votes.
Motion carries five to zero.
Item number four, Councilmember Hoppy.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Council Bill number zero-four two thousand seventeen, an ordinance extending temporary moratorium on the submission, acceptance, processing, and approval of applications and requests for the permit, license, land use approval, or other approval for freestanding emergency room facilities. At issue in April of two thousand sixteen, the city council adopted a one-year moratorium on the submission, acceptance, processing, and approval of applications and requests related to freestanding emergency room facilities. This ordinance extends the moratorium period for an additional six months.
Thank you. Do we have a staff report?
Not on first reading unless you, unless you have other clarification questions.
Any questions that would help on that? Then we can move on to a motion.
I move to approve Council Bill number zero-four two thousand seventeen, an ordinance extending the temporary moratorium on the submission, acceptance, processing, and approval of applications and requests for a permit, license, land use approval, or other approval for a freestanding emergency room facility. On first reading, order it published, public hearing set for Monday, March twenty-seven, March twenty-seventh, two thousand seventeen, at seven P.M. in city council chambers, and that it takes effect fifteen days after final publication.
Second.
Segmented by Ms. Duran. Please cast your votes.
Motion carries five to zero.
Thank you. Number five, Ms. Duran, would you read that?
Yes. Resolution number ten dash twenty seventeen, a resolution approving a cooperation agreement between the Wheat Ridge Urban Renewal Authority and the city of Wheat Ridge concerning the Wheat Ridge Cyclory Improvements Agreement. Issue, the Wheat Ridge Urban Renewal Authority, currently doing business as Renewal Wheat Ridge, entered into an improvements agreement on March twentieth, two thousand and seven for improvements to the Wheat Ridge Cyclory property located at seventy-eighty-five West Thirty-Eighth Avenue. It was the U R A's desire to assist the cyclory in making a number of improvements to the property. As an inducement to complete certain improvements, the U R A agreed to reimburse the cyclory for costs associated with the designated improvements through the use of tax increment financing, TIF. According to the agreement, the cyclory has received a hundred percent of both the property tax and sales tax increment revenue generated by the expansion of the business. Per the improvement agreements, the Wheat Ridge Urban Renewal Authority financial obligations have been satisfied. Therefore, approval of this cooperation agreement will allow the city to discontinue collecting any sales tax increment and shall discontinue remitting any sales tax increment to the W R U R A. The W R U R A will continue to receive incremental property tax revenues through two thousand thirty-two, as allowed by Colorado Urban Renewal Law.
Thank you. Excuse me, on this one, do we have a staff report?
No formal staff report. Mayor Jay, however, Councilmember Davis is a member of the Urban Renewal Authority, so happy to answer any questions if you have those for us.
Sounds good. Do we have questions? Nope. Then we can move on to a motion.
I move to approve Resolution number ten, twenty seventeen, a resolution approving a cooperation agreement between the Wheat Ridge Urban Renewal Authority and the city of Wheat Ridge concerning the Wheat Ridge Cyclory Improvements Agreement.
Second.
Segmented. Please cast your votes.
Was that, Ms. Hoppy? The screen is in the way.
Motion carries five to zero.
Thank you. That concludes our business meeting. I believe we can go right on to, we don't have a city manager. We have our acting city manager, Mr. Chief Brennan, would you like to?
City manager is enjoying a snowstorm in Washington, D.C. at the moment.
Yeah, he's just having a wonderful.
They call it a nor'easter, but nothing else to report.
Nothing else to be reported? City attorney?
Nothing tonight, thanks.
City treasurer?
Thank you. I just wanted to remind the public that our, we have three new reports, financial reports out on the website, the December two thousand sixteen monthly financial report, that's unaudited, but sales tax collections were at a hundred and three percent of projection, so that's three percent over, so that's good for the city and good for the taxpayers. Also, we have the February of two thousand seventeen total funds report, that shows investments and where we're at right now in our checking account balance, and then lastly, we have the new report for December two thousand sixteen, the Fruitdale tracking report, that's under miscellaneous reports on the website under city treasurer. So those three are available on the website, and I had emailed them to council and staff last week, so if you have any questions, let me know.
Mr. Tullio?
Yes.
Did that three percent, was that budgeted funds also with the two E funds in it?
No. That's strictly two thousand sixteen over and above the general fund.
Okay, so it's still what was budgeted, it's not counting the two E monies?
Right, correct.
Okay.
This report goes through two thousand sixteen December, and there's no two E funds, and it's unaudited.
Okay. Any other questions? Let's go ahead and, city clerk?
I just wanted to tell you, I mentioned last time that there was going to be a public hearing to consider the license at Big Willie's on West Forty-Fourth Avenue, and their attorney requested a continuance, so that, as of now, is going to be on March twenty-third instead of this week, or instead of, well, it wasn't last week. It was supposed to be last week, and it's going to be two Thursdays from, on the twenty-third, if anybody is interested in coming.
Thank you. elected officials matters, Alastair Henderson, but tonight.
Not tonight, thank you. I'd like to remind those who are watching, the District Three, George Pond and I will have a District Three listening meeting this Saturday at the Rex Center at nine-thirty A.M. All welcome. We'll talk about District Three.
Nothing, thank you.
District one.
Not tonight, thank you.
Ms. Duran? Nothing tonight, thank you. They all want to get home.
Bachelor's song.
Yeah. We had, we had a tour of the Fruitdale school building last week, fascinating, the remodeling of that, remodeling is hardly the word, it's more like a reconstruction of it. Sixteen apartments it's going to be, it's going to be very, very interesting landscaping, a fruit orchard, it's going to be very nice, very fascinating. I believe that's the end of the meeting.